For roll call, our secretary, Ms. Nelson Williams is unable to be here tonight, so I'll go ahead and take care of that. We have all presidents excluding Ms. Nelson Williams, so we do have a quorum. If you will now rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to welcome you all. I hope you had a wonderful holiday. I talked with Dr. O'Stryke, and you said that everything went well. Teachers on their first day back?
Yep, lots of professional development going on today and finalizing grades and had a wonderful day in the district with our teachers back today.
Fantastic, and our students join us tomorrow. And while I'm thinking about it, I hear you're getting up very early tomorrow morning, so make sure people have their phones ready just in case of winter weather. Great. We will now go into our first section tonight, which is the election of officers. So tonight is an exciting night for many of us as it brings us a new year on the school board. Tonight marks the start of my eighth year serving Carmel Clay Schools, which is amazing to me. I want to really express my gratitude as serving with you, for you, as your president for the past two years. It's really been an honor to work alongside of each and every one of you and witness really the positive impact that we've collectively made. However, as I navigate through some various personal projects, I believe it's time for the board to embrace some new leadership. And so then tonight, I will be motioning for the selection of a new leadership team who can bring some new energy and continue some of the excellent work that we have. So tonight, I would like to start with making a motion to take a slate of candidates, so all of them together. And with that, I would like to propose that we select Ms. Kristen Koke as president, Ms. Jennifer Nelson-Williams as vice president, Ms. Louise Jackson as secretary. With that, do I have a second?
So moved.
Thank you. I didn't move, so you see a second.
Oh, well, second. A little rusty after a break.
No, you're good. All right, and with that, I'll go ahead and I'll open it up for discussion.
Okay, can I?
Yeah, go for it.
Okay, so I'm excited about the slate that we have for the leadership team. I did consider raising my hand for a couple of the roles. I mean, if I'm honest, I just don't know that I feel like the timing is right for me. I just have a lot of moving parts that I don't want to lose sight, and I got to make sure that our leadership roles are really filled in a way that best serve the community, right? So I support the slate being placed before us. When I am thinking about, you know, who best to lead the board or co-lead as vice president, I always go back to our mission. And so the mission is Carmel Clay Schools will provide opportunities for all students to realize their potential in an ever-changing world. So I think, Kristin, you definitely demonstrated that by helping with the referendum, not only this time but previously, doing work in the community to support our needs. Also, you know, I think about how you advocate for our children with special needs, and so I think it would serve the board really positively to have someone who cares about all students, as it says here in the vision, so I think you embody that. I also think that Jennifer, the same way. I know of work that she does in the community on the leadership side to develop leaders and herself as a leader, and I think, you know, she and I, maybe it's not always evident, but a lot of times we have challenging conversations because we don't always see eye to eye or agree on everything, but I appreciate her providing an environment where we can have a respectful debate on things, and so I think she would serve the role of vice president well as well, so.
Thank you. Other discussion? Kristin?
I just want to take the time to thank Katie for all of her effort the last two years as president and on the board for, this is her eighth year, and I'm honored by the nomination, and I feel like I still have a lot to learn and obviously things to learn about leading the board, and I'm ready to do that.
Thank you. Anything else? Greg?
Yeah, I thank you for your service as the president and Louise for your vice president. I appreciate your work on that. And Kristin, I look forward to working with you, and I know I do represent perhaps a different view on a lot of the topics, and I think it's good that we just continue to have robust discussions and listen to, we had to talk about this a little bit earlier, you know, listen to all sides of the conversation, all sides of issues, and realize that the community is very diverse, we all know that, and that we should always be looking for solutions that maximizes the number in the community that are satisfied with choices. And I think if we do that, we're collectively doing our job, and I'm committed to that. It's a great school district. We moved here like so many families have. We, it was 30 years ago. We had a great experience then, and I've been around, able to see more about the school these days, and it's still, you know, an amazing district, and I just want to make sure that, like we all do, that we continue in that path, and I'll do everything I can to make sure that it does, so.
Thank you. All right, with that, we will go ahead and take a vote. All those in favor of Ms. Koke as president, Ms. Nelson-Williams as vice president, Ms. Jackson as secretary, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four to zero. No time like the present, so it is officially now, so Kristin, I would like to invite you to change places with me, and you get the gavel, which I am so excited to present to you. Thank you all. Now I'm getting emotional. I'm so excited to turn this over to you, and we're going to take a picture. You can help her. All right, oops, this is you. So, here's your agenda. Throw you in the deep end. All right. Thank you. Going to try to do this the best I can. Oh, thank you, Greg. All right. So next on the agenda is appointments. The first appointment this evening is for treasurer, deputy treasurer, and approval of bonds for treasurer, deputy treasurer, and extracurricular treasurers.
Thank you, President Koke. Each year, it is necessary for the board to appoint a treasurer and a deputy treasurer within the first 15 days of January. The administration recommends the board consider appointing Mr. Roger McMichael as treasurer and Kara Colros as deputy treasurer. Further, it is recommended that the board approve public official bonds for the treasurer and the deputy treasurer in the amount of $100,000 each. It is recommended the board approve a position schedule bond for extracurricular treasures in the amount of $50,000 for the high school treasurer, $20,000 for the middle schools, and $10,000 for the elementary schools and the ESC. Indiana Code 20-26-4-5 requires a personnel bond for the treasurer, deputy treasurer, and any other individual whose official duties result in them having access to funds exceeding $5,000 per year. Additionally, Carmel Clay Schools has a blanket bond of $1 million under the crime policy, which provides aggregate coverage for all employees in the district. And so it is recommended that the board approve Mr. Roger McMichael as treasurer, Mrs. Kara Colros as deputy treasurer, and approve public official bonds for the treasurer and deputy treasurer for the period of January 2024 to December 2024. It is also recommended the board approve a position schedule bond for extracurricular treasures.
May I have a motion to appoint Mr. McMichael as treasurer, Ms. Colros as deputy treasurer, and to approve the bonds for treasurer, deputy treasurer, and the extracurricular treasurers?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Katie?
And just for clarification too, for those watching, so, and Dr. O'Stryke, I'll correct me if I'm wrong, but this is not a salary towards these individuals, it's more of like, we would think of it as like an insurance policy in case of a problem.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Seeing no discussion, we will now take a vote. All in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries. The next appointment is for general counsel. Dr. O'Stryke?
Each year, it is necessary for the board to appoint a general counsel on or before January 15th. The administration recommends appointing Mr. Andrew Manna and Church Church Hiddle and Antrim as our general counsel. Additionally, I'd like to recognize Mrs. Jessie Billingsley, who is here with us this evening from Church Church Hiddle and Antrim, and we appreciate all of her hard work on behalf of the district. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. O'Stryke. May I have a motion to appoint Mr. Andrew Manna and Church Church Hiddle and Antrim as general counsel?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Katie?
I just want to say thank you to Andrew and to Church Church Hiddle. You guys have always been really great and responsive whenever we've had questions or needs, and I think sometimes that's the biggest thing, is making sure that our needs are addressed timely, so I just wanted to say thank you. Not only do you do a good job, but you also get to us quickly, so that's very helpful. Thank you.
Okay, we'll now take a vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, we have another appointment next. This next appointment is for executive secretary. Again, Dr. O'Stryke.
Thank you. Each year, it is necessary for the board to appoint an executive secretary on or before January 15th to perform secretarial duties as required by the School Board of Trustees. The administration recommends appointing Mrs. Colleen Nobis as the board's executive secretary.
Thank you. May I have a motion to appoint Mrs. Colleen Nobis as executive secretary?
So moved.
And a second?
I will second that all day.
Any discussion?
Katie?
I like to refer to Ms. Nobis as Mary Poppins because she, spoonful of sugar, putting it lightly, everything is in her bag of tricks. She takes such, 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 such good care of us, and I'm so thankful for all the time and energy you put up with us, so thank you so very, very much for even being willing to consider doing it again.
I feel the same way. You pretty much help us do our jobs. We could not do it without you, so we really appreciate you taking this on.
Okay, we will now take a vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And the next appointment is for the cable television representative. Dr. O'Stryke?
Thank you, President Koke. Each year, the board traditionally appoints a cable television representative during its organizational meeting on or before January 15th. The administration recommends appointing Mrs. Christie Cloud as the cable television representative.
Can I have a motion to appoint Mrs. Christie Cloud as cable television representative?
So moved.
Greg, can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, didn't discuss, sorry. No discussion. All right, motion carries.
Did you vote?
Yes. We voted before we discussed, that's my bad.
Four.
The next appointment is for Carmel Clay Parks representative. Dr. O'Stryke?
Thank you. It is recommended that Mrs. Kristen Koke be appointed as the Carmel Clay Parks Board Representative.
Due to this new position I have, I would like to recommend that Ms. Katie Browning be appointed as the Carmel Clay Parks representative in lieu of me taking on this position.
So that will be your motion?
That will be my motion, okay. Do I have?
I will second it.
You'll second it, okay. And any discussion on Katie being the... Katie?
First of all, good thinking. This will be a very new, very busy topic. I have served prior on Carmel Clay Parks, for two years prior. I'm very excited to step in and assist as I can and report back to the board, so I'm happy to take this on in lieu of the change in our board officers.
No other discussion? Okay, we'll take a vote. All in favor of appointing Katie as the Carmel Clay Parks representative signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right, we have another appointment. This next appointment is for the Carmel Redevelopment Commission representative. Dr. O'Stryke?
Thank you. Each year, the board traditionally identifies a Carmel Redevelopment Commission representative during the organizational meeting on or before January 15th, and it is recommended that the board identify Mr. Greg Brown as the Carmel Redevelopment Commission representative.
Can I have a motion to appoint Mr. Greg Brown as the Carmel Redevelopment Commission representative?
So moved.
Second?
Go ahead and go second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Katie? I just want to thank you, Greg, for serving the past year, and I look forward to the next. I appreciate the information that you provide.
I agree. I just wanted to say I think Greg has some really thoughtful information and has been working on compiling some data for us, and so we appreciate that information from the school perspective. We'll now take a vote. All in favor of appointing Mr. Greg Brown to the Carmel Redevelopment position, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And then we have another appointment for, this is for the School Board Carmel Education Foundation Liaison. Dr. O'Stryke?
First, I believe we have the Policy Liaisons.
Oh, did I skip one? I apologize. The next one is the School Board Policy Liaisons. Dr. O'Stryke?
Thank you, President Koke. Responsibilities of the school board include developing, evaluating, and adopting local policies to govern the schools and the students according to Indiana Code 20-26-3-5. The School Board Policy Liaisons will serve as the primary contacts for the board members, administration, and legal counsel to recommend policy updates. And it is recommended that Mrs. Louise Jackson and Ms. Jennifer Nelson-Williams serve as the School Board Policy Liaisons.
Hey, may I have a motion to appoint Mrs. Louise Jackson and Mrs. Jennifer Nelson-Williams as the School Board Policy Liaison?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, we will now take a vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Now we will go to the last appointment. The last appointment is for the School Board Carmel Education Foundation Liaison.
Thank you. The Carmel Education Foundation Liaison is a new position to the board, and so the board will appoint a board member or designee as the Carmel Education Foundation Liaison on or before January 15th. It is recommended that the board appoint Ms. Jennifer Nelson-Williams to serve as the Carmel Education Foundation Liaison.
Can I have a motion to appoint Ms. Jennifer Nelson-Williams as the Carmel Education Foundation Liaison?
So moved.
Second? Any discussion? Okay, we will now take a vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. So next on the agenda, we are done with the appointments. Next on the agenda are the related items. The related items include establishing the salaries of the board members. Dr. O'Stryke?
Thank you. Each year, the board traditionally establishes salaries of school board members during its organizational meeting on or before January 15th. It is recommended that the school board's salaries remain at $2,000 per year per statute.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the established salary for each board member at $2,000 per statute?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? No? We will take a vote then. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
And there is no public comment?
There is no public comment, all right. The next thing on our agenda is consent. So consent includes our personnel report, claims, payroll, and the obsolete equipment and authorization to sign agreement for alternative services and private residential school placements. Roger, did you want to explain the obsolete equipment piece?
Yes, we have, I think, 50 Chromebook carts. It's basically a cabinet that Chromebooks can be stored in, and when we had shared Chromebooks early on, we bought these, and then there was like a classroom set, but since then, we've moved to one-on-one, so we have absolutely no use for these, and they're really kind of in the way. And there's another school district, Delaware, I believe it is, that would have, these would be of great value to them, they're of no value to Carmel, so we're recommending that the school board donate those to that school district.
Okay, thank you. And then, Dr. O'Stryke, did you want to explain the authorization to sign agreements? This is something that's kind of only on our agenda once during the year, and so I want to make sure people understand.
Absolutely. So from time to time, there'll be agreements where we'll need alternative services and private placements for our students, including but not limited to residential school placements and therapeutic day school placements, and what this authorization allows is for Dr. Bearsford, myself, and then Mrs. Stephanie Fairchild, our Director of Special Services, to go ahead and make authorizations and make these placements as needed throughout the year.
Okay, thank you for that. Do I have a motion to approve the consent items?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I would just add, we do this every once in a while, the consent items are just a normal business kinds of things that come up, and they're all kind of bundled together into one topic so that they're not controversial, and let's just kind of get them off the agenda quickly, and because it's not always clear, you know, but to me, when I used to watch the board meetings, I didn't know what consent meant exactly, but from time to time, I think it's good to mention that in there that...
Yeah, exactly, and that's part of, something that we have to prove at these meetings, like you were saying, because it is, as I was saying before, it's claims, and claims is things that we have to pay for, for services and goods, as well as the personnel report and payroll, and those things have to be approved by us at these meetings. So you're right, though, I know it can be confusing to some. Any other discussion?
We will now take a vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We are going to move on to our action items this evening. Our first action item is a bid award for the Carmel High School radio/TV equipment upgrade. Mr. McMichael?
Thank you. This is the part of the larger project, of the Polytech project that we're doing at the high school, and as is noted, we're doing fairly minor facility changes in the area of radio and TV, but most of the expense is for this equipment. As you can see in the report, we received one bid, solicited to six vendors, but only received one bid. However, the bid is well within our estimate, and we feel it is a solid bid, and it's to New Era, is the contractor, and the amount is $789,415, and we'd recommend your approval.
May I have a motion to approve the bid award for the Carmel High School radio/TV equipment upgrade?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just to kind of share with the audience that we've been noticing a lot of bids recently are above budget quite a bit, lots of inflationary pressures and whatnot, but this was one that even though we only had one bid, returned, it was less than what we had budgeted, so that's, that was a good...
Good change.
Yes, thank you, Greg. And this is really essential for, you know, as many of you know, we have a really great radio and TV program at the high school, and so it's essential to upgrade this equipment for them to have access to more updated equipment. We will take a vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Next on the agenda, we have the Board of Finance Organization meeting. So at this time, what we have to do is we suspend the regular school board trustees meeting for the purpose of convening the Carmel Clay Schools Board of Finance. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. So, Mr. McMichael, can you provide the board with background information, kind of tell us about the Board of Finance?
I can. In accordance with statute, the Board of Finance must meet annually after the first Monday in honor before the last day of January and elect a president and a secretary. In accordance with the statute, the fiscal body of the political subdivision constitutes the Board of Finance for that political subdivision. Therefore, if the Board of Trustees desires, the officers of the Board of Finance may also be the officers of, or be the officers of the Board of School Trustees, which is what we have recommended. And the Board of Finance will also receive and review investment reports, and also, there's actually four things. You're going to elect a president and secretary, you're going to review the report of investments, report, and I will report on the financial condition of the school district, and then you'll have opportunity to review the investment policy. So that's kind of the order of things and what the requirement is.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McMichael. The first action of the Board of Finance is to appoint a president and a secretary. The administration is recommending the president and secretary of the school board also serve as president and secretary of the Board of Finance. May I have a motion?
Second.
Any discussion?
Greg.
Greg. Seeing no discussion, we'll take a vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. The next part of this meeting is, I'm going to have Mr. McMichael present the report of investments for 2023, which is a report on the financial condition of the corporation, and you're going to give us information regarding the district's investment program.
Yes, first, I will report on the investments which you have included in your report. I'll note that this year, our investments earned $468,913.65. That's significant in that last year, we earned $74,000, and so, which has been typical for, unfortunately, for the last several years. So one of the pluses of the higher inflation and the increased in interest rates, we're also earning more interest than we have for a number of years, so that's, of course, a real positive. Secondly, I will pull up the report relative to the financial condition of the district, and I'll share that with the screen as soon as I figure out how. There we go. Am I doing this right? All right. There we go, I think, almost. Look at me. Okay, so since 2019, after, as a result of that legislative session, there was a new requirement added for school corporations pertaining to the school corporation's so-called fiscal indicators, which are provided by the distressed unit appeals board. This board was created, there were some difficulties with, you know, at least one school district I can think of, and maybe others, that really got themselves into financial difficulty, and their school board really, it was late in the game before they understood that, and so the legislators saw fit to put in new legislation that would require school districts to share, at least once a year, share, we do more than that, as you know, with our monthly updates and so forth, but this is a kind of a more of a, a little bit more of a formal approach to share some information, the so-called fiscal indicators, which are provided by the distressed unit appeals board for school districts, and so they're, of course, tailored to each district, and so that's the information that I'll be presenting. So the first thing is, is I would note that, and this is our latest information for this report, for 2023-24, our membership, average daily membership of students was 15,982. for 2324, our membership, uh, average daily membership of students was 15,982 students. Uh, and you'll see here, uh, since 2013, you can see for the last nine or 10 years, the, uh, the percentage of English language learners, free and reduced lunch, and spatial education. And, and I would note that, um, English language learners since 2013 has increased 61%. So as Greg alluded to earlier, Carmel's becoming, has become more and more diverse over the, over the years, and certainly this reflects that. Um, also, our free and reduced lunch has increased 21%. Um, and then our spatial education has really grown. It's, 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 it's also up, uh, 43% since 2013. Uh, and you can see the progression of that in the, in the chart. Our average daily membership, as you can see, has been, been pretty level. We, we, uh, as, as the board already knows, we, we declined, um, to, a bit the last, uh, prior three years this year, which is not included in this report, but, but we actually, we did increase this year slightly, uh, which is, you know, we see that as a positive, and, and, uh, believe that that will continue to go up a bit. Uh, but our, our projection for years has been that we're, we're about, um, built out and about leveled out as far as our enrollment. And prior to COVID even, the, the long-term projection was that we would decline a bit over the, over the next eight or 10 years. Exhibit three represents the combined fund balance for the General Fund, Education Fund, and the Operating Referendum. And I'd note that, uh, the Education Fund was replaced, replaced the General Fund in 2019, and the Rainy Day Fund, it was, we started including that in, in 2020. So you can see here, the, uh, our, our fund balance, our cash balances remain somewhat, uh, even, which is a goo, a good thing to see. We don't want it to go way up and then down and up and down. So our, our financial goal is to, to maintain a rather steady cash balance. And as you know, our plan is to increase it, uh, a bit over the next, uh, few years. And this is, uh, another report that, uh, shows that essentially the same information as a percentage. And you can see, 2022, our, our combined balances were, was just over eight percent, and that's our minimum, uh, that we would, would strive for, and, and, um, our intent is to, to, to gradually increase it to closer to 12%. Then we have operating referendum, we know how important that is to us, and, and in 2022, it was 17.8% of our total revenue for the Education Fund, the Operating Referendum, and the Rainy Day Fund. And you can see the chart here, and that has, um, and you'll remember that when we started the refer, the Operating Referendum, the tax rate was established at 16 cents, and we later raised it to 19 cents. And that's, you can see that reflected in the graph as well. And so we have retained financial stability over the, over the period of 2014 to 2022. Our average cash balance for the past nine years has been 8.3%. And as I had noted earlier, uh, our district goal is a minimum of eight percent. So with that, that concludes my report. And then the final thing is, is you do have our, um, your really investment policy. Um, and, uh, essentially, uh, as a school district, we only invest in government-backed securities, um, and, um, which the very common, uh, security would be a, a certificate of deposit. And, um, and so all of our money is, is, uh, invested in overnight certificates, um, constantly, every day, really. So, which is where a good deal of the $468,000 of interest came from. So with that, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. McMichael. There is no other business at this time for the Board of Finance. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Can I have a second? And all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries. So at this time, we will reconvene the meeting of the Carmel Clay Board School of Trustees.
Could I ask, could I ask a question on that? I wasn't sure if I should do it during the hearing or now, just a, a quick one on the, and we've been talking about this, Roger, the, uh, I know, um, to get the cash balance up higher to improve our S and P rating. And I know, I think it was, uh, October, we added two and a half million to the Rainy Day Fund.
Yes.
How, has that affected that eight percent target we've had yet so far?
It has, uh, 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 in, in our second meeting in January, when I present the monthly financial report, you'll see, you'll see that reflected. Um, this, as I recall, the, uh, ending November balance, I haven't seen December yet, but ending November, we're, we should, we're up about, I believe it was about three and a half million dollars over the, over 2022. Um, and about two and a, two and a half million of that is the increase in the Rainy Day Fund. So, so we're up a bit overall, but, but the significant reason we're up is, is because of the, um, increase to the, to the Rainy Day Fund, which has been part of our planning.
Has that affected the, the number yet, trying to get past eight percent?
It will, ye, yes.
We just don't know the number yet.
I don't have that, that percentage off the top of my head, but it's, it's, we're definitely going to be above eight percent by the end, you know, the end of the year. And, and we, we particularly focus now on, um, a fiscal year of, of June 30th, because our funding from the state is on a fiscal year as opposed to a calendar year. But we, we really look at, we look at it every month, as you know, but, but we particularly look at it in, in, at the end of June, and, and the second place would be the end of this, of the calendar year.
Thank you.
Any other questions about that one? No. Next on the agenda is the discussion item. It's the first reading of Policy 6146, Department Management, Dr. Dudley.
Thank you. So this policy, the debt management policy, uh, Mr. McMichael brought some recommendations, um, for updates to this policy, and I'm going to let him take it and talk about why.
Okay, well, um, we made some, uh, proposed amendments to this policy to better align with how, uh, are, are both our debt and our tax rates are managed. Um, um, as, there were two, um, metric, debt metrics that were removed. Uh, the first being, uh, debt server, one of them was that it stated that we'd have a debt service will not exceed 15% of operating expenses, and the second was that the net debt, uh, per capita will not exceed $2,000. There's nothing really wrong with those, but as you know, our, our focus is, is targeted at, uh, tax rate is one, and then, uh, our, our goal to continue paying bonds back as aggressively as possible. So we, we've amended this, um, um, debt policy that, that better, we think better reflects those, uh, the fo, those, what, what we focus on, which are those two things. We've kept the, um, metric, um, related to, uh, uh, that, that the school's debt to the gross assessed value would remain the same, which is, would be three percent at maximum. And, um, so those are the, the, uh, that really the changes are, are the metrics that we're, we're really wanting to focus on, on, um, aggressive repayment schedule and, and managing, and the tax rate.
Do any of the board members have any questions on the debt management policy? All right, if not, we will move on to updates. Dr. O'Stryke?
Thank you very much, Presidents Ko, President Koke. Uh, so I'd first like to start off by sharing about our Carmel Cyber Patriot Teams, our 2023, 2024 State Champions for the AFA Cyber Patriot Competition again. And so this program puts students in mock positions working for small companies and provides scenarios to seek out and fix cybersecurity vulnerabilities. The program has grown to almost 60 students, enough for 10 competing teams, and it was a clean sweep in the Indiana Platinum Division, uh, first and second in the Gold Division, and second in the Silver Division. So, uh, nationally, Carmel placed eighth out of more than 2,000 teams, um, in 23, 20, or last year, I believe that was. So we are very proud of our Cyber Patriot Team, and we look forward to their continued great performances. Um, I'd also, so as Dr. Bearsford shares with you oftentimes, that he thinks cross-country is the greatest sport in the world, and he, running, and all of those things. For me, I'm a big performing arts guy, and being a former orchestra teacher, uh, in the state of Indiana, I love our performing arts, uh, in Carmel. And so I'd like to share that the Indiana Music Educators Association is hosting their annual conference, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday up in Fort Wayne, Indiana. I'll be presenting a session on Friday, and I'd also like to congratulate two of our school ensembles that have been selected to perform at this prestigious event. So on Friday at 11:00 a.m., our Smokey Row Orf Ensemble, under the direction of their teacher, Josh Southard, will perform. Um, and then on Saturday at 10:30 a.m., our Carmel Middle School Eighth Grade Wind Ensemble, under the direction of their teachers, Becky McLahanen and Ben Maynard, will perform at the conference. And so we have such amazing examples of our great performing arts program to show off to our community, to the state and beyond. And we are very proud of our students and our teachers, and we really appreciate the fantastic support that all of our kids receive, not only from their teachers, but from their parents. Because as a, I have a child who's in orchestra, renting the instrument, and the music, and the commitment, and the time, and the driving to performances and rehearsals, we appreciate our parents quite a bit. So congratulations to Carmel Middle School and Smokey Row Elementary School. Tonight, we hosted our support staff hiring event at Clay Middle School, and we had approximately 75 attendees at the event. We had every single school represented, uh, we had many of our divisions there. Mr. Fignolio in the back, he attended and was, uh, supporting our operations and transportation division, um, in the district. And I want to say a special thank you, uh, to our H R team, Dr. Holly Herrera, uh, Becky Thornberry, Rosa Banda, Kelly Hackett, and Taylor Shipley, along with our district leaders who attended, our teacher leaders. Uh, some of our teachers were there, bragging about our great schools, um, and the different divisions within Carmel Clay Schools. And so I want to thank everybody, and we are in really good shape overall, uh, with all of our positions in the district. And I can't wait to get the updates, uh, from tonight to see how we're doing. So congratulations, uh, to the H R team. And for tonight's bell ringer, we are celebrating School Board Appreciation Week. So we want to thank you to our CCS School Board members for your commitment, your leadership, and your partnership. As a reminder, our school board members devote hours each week to the district. And while it is a paid position, as you heard tonight, this position is truly a labor of love, because if we broke it down by hour, it would be pennies. And so we thank you, we appreciate your efforts, your dedication. Um, our school board members tonight will receive ca, thank you cards from our students. So get, they'll get to go through of those this evening, those are in your bag at your place. And then we will also, as Roger McMichael is, uh, displaying right now, uh, they'll also receive a floral arrangement from us this evening. So we thank you for all you do, we, uh, appreciate your time, your efforts, your supports in all of your questions in making Carmel Clay Schools the absolute, absolute best school district here in the state of Indiana. So thank you, and let's give them a round of applause, please. And then finally, as, uh, I don't know if it was, uh, President Koke or former President Browning shared with us earlier, uh, I think it was President, former President Browning, who shared that, uh, we will be up very early tomorrow, checking the weather and driving the roads if necessary. I hope I wake up at 4:00 a.m. and it's clear, and we just have rain and all that good stuff. Um, our students think otherwise, uh, but we will be up very early monitoring the weather, and we are hoping for an on-time arrival tomorrow morning. And I know many of our parents who have been with their children over winter break, I'm sure, are hoping for an on-time arrival tomorrow morning. And so with that, that concludes your superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. O'Stryke. We appreciate it, and I think all of us sitting here can agree that we, we have felt led to lead here on the board, and, and we really enjoy our work for the district. Uh, if there is no other business, we will adjourn the January 8th, 2024 workshop, workshop session. Can I have a motion to adjourn? And a second?
Second.
All in, we do, do we need to do all in favor? All in favor? Say aye. Meeting adjourned. Thanks for being with me.